Welcome, everybody, to the April 10th Planning Commission for the City of Columbia. We are without a screen for the public, so there's one up here. If, uh, it's really loud. If you have anything specific that you're not sure on, um, sorry about that. Feel free to come up when we call for comments and we can provide some more context if it's needed relative to the application. But I just want to welcome everyone today, Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. Multiple staff members are here today to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly and all applicants and members of the public are able to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times. If you are here today and would like to speak about a case, you'll have a time to come up. Please be sure to provide your name clearly and speak into the microphone, and please be sure to sign in either at the back of the room or the podium for documentation purposes. And we'll let you know when the time is right for a public comment.
Great. I'll go ahead and call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Harp?
Here.
Mr. Holcomb?
Here.
Mr. Osorio?
Here.
Ms. Cuvney?
Here.
And Mr. Cohen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. I'll give a brief overview of the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of 10 minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. The time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding the request, and during the public comment period, members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns of intervals of two minutes. After the public comment period, applicants may have five minutes to respond. And the administrator has a timer and will help make presenters aware when their time has expired, and the Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't believe we've had any changes since publication.
The Planning can use, uh, sorry, we'll go over the consent agenda. Throw this dry. The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include the approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, you must speak up after the consent agenda is read. Then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting, and then the Planning Commission will move to approve the remaining consent agenda items. Will staff please read the consent agenda?
Certainly. The first item is to approve the March 13th, 2025 minutes. Number two is Annex-2025-0005, 421 Piney Woods Road. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Urban Edge Mixed Residential (UEMR) and the assignment of zoning of Residential Mixed District RM1 for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as Mixed Residential High Density and Zoned Homestead HM by Richland County. Number three, Annex-2025-0006, .05 acre on the east side of Bluff Road. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Industrial and the assignment of zoning of Heavy Industrial District HI for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as Mixed Residential High Density and Zoned Heavy Industrial HI by Richland County. Four is Annex-2025-0007, 2.16 acre portion of 2010 Bluff Road. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Industrial and the assignment of zoning of Light Industrial District LI for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as Mixed Residential High Density and Zoned Heavy Industrial HI by Richland County. Five is Annex-2025-0008, 101, 40, and 150 Fontaine Center Drive. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classifications of Urban Edge Mixed Residential (UEMR) and Employment Campus (EC) and the assignment of zoning of Employment Campus District for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as Mixed Residential High Density and Zoned General Commercial and Light Industrial M1 by Richland County. And number six is a zoning map amendment, ZMA-2025-0007, 111 and a portion of 161 and 171 and 181 Pontiac Business Center Drive and 594 Spears Creek Church Road. Request recommendation to rezone the property from Light Industrial District LI to Employment Campus District EC. And finally, under street name, we have SN-2025-0001, street name request to name streets within the 2300 block of Percival Road. The Percival Road townhomes, Knight Grail Drive, Country Love Lane, Preater/Pariter Way, Carbonut Castle Lane, Noble Grail Road, and Morgana Mist Way. The properties are zoned Residential Mixed District RM2. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any members of the Planning Commission that would like any item removed from the consent agenda? Are there any members of the public that would like to have an item removed for review from the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, we will take a motion for the consent agenda in the meeting minutes prior.
Mr. Chair, make a motion for the consent agenda in the March 13, 2025 minutes.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes and move on to the regular agenda. Will you read? I guess it's item eight on the regular agenda.
The first case on the regular agenda is 84, 92, and 94 Bluff Road. Tax map number 112040240, and this is a request for a recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Urban Core Mixed Residential Type III and the assignment of zoning of Residential Two Family Mill Village District, RDMV, and portions are within the floodplain overlay district for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as Mixed Residential High Density and Zoned Residential VI by Richland County. I did want to make a few notes on the staff recommendation. You know, staff is recommending denial, but I do want to mention that in terms of the future land use and zoning district, it actually is the most appropriate zoning district within the City of Columbia, what the city has to offer, but it is, there is an existing county, uh, moratorium on, on, on rezonings and permits, et cetera, and it's effective for 180 days, so just at this time, staff doesn't feel they should recommend approval. And there are some things within the, you know, within the criteria for approval of rezonings that we've pointed to in the staff recommendation, and basically it's the effect on the surrounding community that has to be considered when looking at rezonings.
When did this moratorium go into effect?
It went into effect on April 1st.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this particular one.
Okay.
Leave the room.
Thank you. Do we need to formally make note of that, or?
We'll make note of it in the minutes. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Holcomb has recused himself.
The applicant is present, and I believe he would like to address.
Sure. One other question I had just to Mr. Harps was, was it April 1st of 2025?
Yes. Yeah.
So, and was this application in before that occurred?
It was in prior to that. That is correct.
Okay.
And just to be clear, the, the moratorium does not affect us as we are a separate jurisdiction. However, we, you know, we always do consider all the existing plans and proposals for the area when we make our recommendations.
Okay. Do any commission members have any questions for staff?
My only question is, is the only reason that you're recommending the denial is the current moratorium?
Right, because it would have the effect of removing the property from the proposal that the county is considering, and, and they are considering a historic overlay for that area which would have regulations on, you know, both what could be built there and also demolitions, et cetera.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Hey, Jason Holliday with Sand River Development. I got some handouts that I'm gonna get Mead Coleman with Captain Relied Handout. So, we did start this process before the moratorium went in place, and y'all had previously annexed the adjacent parcels back in the last quarter of last year. That was 100 Bluff Road and 108 Bluff Road. So, the site plan, which is the larger document, it'll show, it shows the previous pieces that were annexed, which would be the rectangular portions.
Hold on one moment. I forget. Thanks. Thank you.
So, the site plan is the bigger document. So, the piece on that site plan that shows 10 duplexes, that's on more of a rectangular piece, that piece has already been annexed into the city back in September. It went through Planning Commission and had the two hearings and all, I mean, it passed with no issues. The neighbors, when we started kind of work on that site, the neighbors on this triangular piece approached us and wanted to sell their portion, which the triangular piece on the site plan is the one that has four duplexes. It's the, it's, oh, you see it? Okay. And that's the piece that we're trying to annex into this, this project. I mean, it's two separate projects, and this one, the reason Darren recused himself, Darren's already started civil work on the first project. He's actually the one that drew the site plan. And so, we just wanted to annex this additional parcel into the city so that we can get water and sewer in order to get that, the taps we need to be in the city. So, I mean, I've also done renderings that show kind of what we're planning on building, and those are in the colored document that's bound. I mean, currently with the county, we have higher density with the county than we're proposing with the city. So, I mean, we're actually downgrading the density, and like I said, our main reason is to be in the cities for the water and sewer. I mean, we gotta have the access to the utilities. I mean, I can talk more. If y'all have questions, you can ask me questions, but if you might have questions on, I mean, just the wrench that got thrown in, it's the moratorium that went in place April 1st, and that's just, we couldn't get on the agenda. We just closed on this parcel like 30 days ago, and I mean, I got with Andrew the day we closed to try to get on the agenda to get it annexed, and then we got on the agenda, and then this moratorium was thrown in on April 1st. Any questions?
Any commission members have any questions? The applicant?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, it says in our packet that it was on the agenda at the April 7th Richland County meeting. Did they make any comments, or did it get passed off because of the moratorium?
I'll let Andrew speak to that, because I wasn't.
Yeah, so I'll address that. What was on the Aprils, or what will be on, oh, sorry, that is a couple days ago. What was on the April 7th agenda was the county is proposing a historic district overlay, and so that is what is on, on their agenda.
And this is for staff. If the county goes forward with their historic district overlay, would it override anything the city decides, or if the city accepts it, they can't overlay on to there?
No. It, it, so, you know, when or if we annex the property, it would be subject to city regulations and not the county regulations.
I will say one more thing. I mean, ultimately, I've gotta circle back to y'all, and I think if the moratorium wasn't in place, I'd have the staff's approval, but I mean, ultimately, I gotta have the water and sewer for that parcel to do anything with it.
And the property that surrounds, you can see on ours, I think this in yellow, you have all the sides of that.
Do I now?
You have, you have everything planned north.
Yeah, correct. I mean, I have those two parcels that are now city annexed, and then the city backs up to it, the old baseball stadium backs up to it. So, I mean, this little triangle is surrounded by city parcels. I mean, it's a donut hole that ultimately y'all's agenda would be to annex, I believe.
And I think if I remember, I've been by there, there's no, are the structures still there, or have they been taken down?
There is an existing structure on the site. I mean, it's a dilapidated house and some old sheds. Like I said, the people approached us about selling it, and they know it's gonna be torn down. I mean, that was, we actually let them, they're staying there until they're moving to Edisto, but they're still there currently. I think they're there till the beginning of June, and then we're gonna, we were intended on tearing it down. We did tear down, I mean, the other pieces that y'all annexed in, I mean, the smaller piece had a mobile home on it, and then the larger tract has a condemned house back in the woods that will be demoed. The demo permit's already been issued on it, so, I mean, like I said, we started work on the other pieces that are already annexed.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have any other questions?
You got two pieces, or is it just one? It's just the one that's in question right now is the triangular piece in green. Yeah, that's right. And that is, it's made up of 84, 92, and 94, the addresses that are listed, that makes up that triangular piece. I think it, I mean, on y'all's tablets, it's the triangle. The yellow piece to the right of the triangle is the portion that's already been annexed. The yellow piece to the right of the triangle is the portion that's already been annexed.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone else here from the public that would like to speak regarding this application? Yes, sir. Can you please come to the podium?
And the question I have, I'm not quite sure I know exactly where this parcel is, it's kind of located.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Oh, yes. Is this parcel located essentially behind the old baseball stadium?
It's, it's one of the ones.
It's one of the ones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this is gonna be like a multi-housing development of some sort?
That's what the applicant, I think, would be proposing.
Yeah, so they want to annex this to the city and then build this like a, similar to the Oaks, which possibly is, you're familiar with?
I am.
No?
Well, let me, let me just back everyone up. So, we're purely, they would have to come for site plan approval and other measures later. It's purely for the annexation and the application of zoning that would be relative to the zoning it currently has.
Okay, so you're not considering anything else at this time?
Not considering what he intends to do. He's just shared more than he probably would need to.
Okay. So, it's just a request for annexation?
Yes, sir. And a zoning classification.
And it'll change from what to what?
Well, it's, it's currently in the county, so it would, it would come into the city with a zoning classification based on what would be corresponding to the county. Am I saying that correctly?
Sure, but I can address the current county zoning district, zoning district is R6, and that's a multifamily zoning district. This is a, it's our residential two-family Mill Village District, and so it does allow duplexes, and you could have multiple duplexes on the lot, but it is not strictly multifamily district in the sense of you couldn't.
Would it be possible that they could build dormitory-style housing there?
They would not be able to build what we would classify as a private student dormitory, but they could certainly build something that would be rented to students. In the city, we do restrict occupancy to no more than three unrelated individuals. So, I don't know if that addresses it, I mean, I'd.
Now that helps me understand.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Do any commission members have any further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have an additional question for staff. In the staff recommendation, I see that it says that this request is not appropriate due to the changing conditions in the affected area, and given the effect of this change on the property and on the surrounding neighborhood, does not recommend approval of this request. What specifically about the change of the affected area, I guess, was that common relevant to?
Sure, very specifically, it is the proposed historic overlay and the moratorium.
Okay. I think I had a general question about approving the annexation, but not necessarily the zoning, or I was a little, I think confused.
Sure, so, you know, planning commission's role in the process is making a recommendation on the future land use map, which is part of the comprehensive plan, and then also making a recommendation on the zoning district. The annexation itself is something that is more council's purview. So, you know, and I'll be honest, staff struggled with the recommendation, you know, again, in terms of the districts that we have available in our toolbox, we do believe that these are the most appropriate districts. But again, it's because of the condition of that existing moratorium that we just found that we could not recommend approval.
Thank you. Is that moratorium due to what's going on down there, or is that something that the city has just enacted? What was the reasoning behind that?
No, so the Richland County enacted the moratorium. There is a proposed historic district.
Okay.
For the Olympia Mill Village.
Mm-hmm.
And this is just within that geographic area that's been identified.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I guess I will say one thing, regardless of y'all's recommendation, this does continue to city council as long as the applicant wishes, and of course, they will hold a public hearing, and they can make their determination as well.
Sure, come on.
Currently, as it stands, and I think this would go to what he's asking, I could build apartments right there right now under the county zoning. I don't want to do that, and I'm downgrading to build lower-density duplexes, and the ultimate reason is the utilities. I mean, that's, that's the reason for the annexation. I mean, right now, I'm actually hurting myself from a zoning standpoint on density to annex into it, but, I mean, it, it goes along with what I think the community wants over there, which is, they don't want the real high-density stuff. So, I mean, I'm trying to be, kind of keep the community in mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any, any further comments from the public? Any further comments from commissioners? All right, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the request to assign the future land use classification of urban core mixed residential type three, and the request to assign the zoning classification of residential two-family Mill Village District, portions within the floodplain overlay district for the properties at 84, 92, and 94 Bluff Road at the time of annexation, as it would result in development that can be, that can be served by available, adequate, and suitable public facilities.
All right, thank you. We've got a motion, any discussion?
Second.
Take a second. Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
So, the, the next case on our agenda is, is a zoning map amendment, 2025001, 5420 Forest Drive, tax map number 167060406, and this is a request for a recommendation to rezone the property from General Commercial District, GC, to General Commercial District, GC, with the outdoor advertising sign overlay district, OV-OAS, in order to allow an outdoor advertising, also known as a billboard sign. What I would say is this is not a typical rezoning request, this is an overlay, and this would apply to a specific chunk of the property. There are some images that, that follow, actually, listen, would you mind? That, that show the, well, if I can move this. Yeah. Okay. Well. Sorry, we're struggling with technology today. So, on the screen right now, it shows a, you know, roughly square parcel with a legal description, and, and as, as you've seen in some of these other images, this is on Forest Drive, near where Percival Road comes in, near the detention pond in front of the Walmart, if you're familiar with that development. And so, this is, you know, a requirement in order, in order to construct a new billboard, but part of the other requirement is that the number of billboards within the city are capped at the number that was in the city, and I actually wrote it in the packet, I should remember off the top of my head, but February 1st, 2000, but it does allow for the replacement of signs that are elsewhere in the city, and so the applicant has proposed replacing two signs. One is located at 111 Newland Drive, and the other one is at 1043 UG Street, and I believe the applicant is here, that can, and he can speak to more on the application if you wish.
Wonderful, thank you. Are there any questions of commissioners for staff?
Can we see the Google Earth image, street level?
Certainly, yeah. You're talking about the, this?
That one, yeah.
So, and there are, there are two images.
This one. There's already a billboard there, right?
This is existing?
No, that's a, that's a model.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, it looks real.
Yeah.
I was like, what are we meeting about here? Okay. And my other question is, are they proposing to replace two with one? So, they're gonna remove two and put one back?
That is correct, yeah.
Why would they do that?
Um.
Maybe I can answer that.
Yeah, the applicant can better address that than I can, but I will say there are, there are replacement ratios, but they, they are exceeding the required replacement.
Like square footage? Okay.
And, and, and the, within the OV-OAS, it does allow for a maximum of 380 square feet per sign face, and it does allow two sign faces, and there's some requirements about, you know, they can't be stacked on top of each other, and they can't be side by side, so it's designed to be back-to-back, or it can be up to a 45-degree angle in addressing the street.
So, it's not a digital sign?
Again, the applicant can better address that.
Is the applicant here?
Might tell us your name. Good afternoon, good afternoon. My name is Mason Sullivan, I work for Lamar Advertising. Our new general manager, Alex Voss, is also here. He started in February, and the short answer I think you were all looking for, I think Mr. Holcomb addressed, was why would you take down two billboards and replace it with another? The current billboard, or the current sign ordinance in the city zoning code allows for a replacement. I think I would draw your attention to the two locations in the application for the replacement, which is, you're familiar with a hotel on UG Street that's being constructed close to where Grice's Market was a long time ago. That's one of the locations that's been removed, accounting for the square footage replacement, so that that UG Street corridor could be developed with a hotel. And then, the other location is one that we have scheduled for removal, and on the 28th, I think, of this month, which is a non-conforming structure as well on Interstate 20 near Jim Hudson Chevy, I think is the dealership, on I-20. It's too close to the overpass and exit, which is what creates the nonconformity. So, I just started with Lamar about two years ago, and one of the benefits to the zoning code is it allows us a replacement at a reduced square footage in certain select circumstances. So, we met with Erica and Hope and have continued a conversation and a dialogue on how to apply this portion, because it hasn't been applied, but one other time for Lamar, which is at 446 Clemson Road, it's Clemson and Earth Roads intersection, where there's a small digital poster. So, we're just looking for a way to utilize this provision in the ordinance as we lose structures, when properties developed in the city, to meet what the city requires of us to be able to reconstitute a structure at a lower ratio, if that makes sense. So, at this time, I think somebody also asked, was it slated for digital at this time? We, we have a digital structure up the road that's back-to-back, so we have no immediate plans for the foreseeable future for that structure to become digital. I'm also happy to answer any other questions about it.
Is this, can you see what we see?
I can.
Is that, is that just, is that accurate to scale, or is that just a representation to show where it's gonna be?
It's a representation, and we have schematics ordered. The city requires that it not exceed 35 feet at height for this type of road that's a non-interstate road. I think for the interstate, they want the overall height to be 50 feet, not deferred to Mr. Livinggood on specifics, but 35-foot tall at the highest point, less than 45-degree, what we call a V on the back of it. It's very similar to the structure on, well, without the digital element, it would be static copy, but on Elmwood, when you drive by the one that was changed per the digital replacement for a non-conforming sign, it's the same sign size of the face, a 10 and a half by 36, which is that 378 square feet. This is kind of a boring one, I will say, like where it's just a regular static billboard within the city rules for the replacement of the nonconforming. We can't just build a billboard anywhere per that zoning rule. So, the only new ones that come up are replacing ones that we've taken down at a ratio based on the criteria in the non-conforming sign section.
Thank you. Anyone have any more other questions? The applicant? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for having us.
All right, are there any, any other members of the public that would like to speak regarding this application? All right, now we can take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the request to amend the zoning map for the property at 5420 Forest Drive to General Commercial District, Outdoor Advertising Sign Overlay District, as it meets the decision standards outlined in Section 17-2.5(c) in the Unified Development Ordinance.
Have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, the next case on the agenda is zoning map amendment 2025008, and this is 3310, 3332 Unit A, 3332 Unit B, and 1.29 acres on the southeast side of Leesburg Road with several tax map numbers. And this is a request for a recommendation to rezone the property from residential single-family large lot district and residential single-family small lot district to Neighborhood Activity Center Corridor District, also known as NAC. And this application is, again, a little bit different than normal, where the staff is recommending approval, but also I am the applicant in this matter. This is essentially restoring zoning that was in place prior to adoption of our zoning maps in the UDO. It's been a product of a fairly lengthy discussion with, with some of the property owners and us and staff, and in light of the fact of, of the history of the property, the widening of Leesburg Road, et cetera, we feel comfortable rezoning it to NAC, or at least I feel comfortable applying for it. I will mention that one of the parcels is a city-owned parcel, it's a, it's a part of the utility system for the water system, and we're mainly including it just because it's part of the greater rezoning, we didn't want to leave just a isolated parcel of RSF3. And I'd be more than glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Can't recall you being the applicant.
Sorry?
Said I can't recall the last time you were the applicant.
I have not been, yes.
Do you need to come to the podium?
Yes.
I'm just kidding. Any commission members have any other questions? All right, is there any, anyone in the public that would like to comment on this? Making it tough on him, man. Take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the request to amend zoning map for the property at 3310, 3332 Unit A, 3332. thirty-three, thirty-two, Unit B, and one point two nine acres southeast Leesburg Road to Neighborhood Activity Center Corridor District as amees to decision standards outlining section seventeen dash two point five C in the Unified Development Ordinance.
Thank you. Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the the next case on our agenda is item number eleven, which is ZMA twenty twenty-five zero zero nine. It is thirteen nineteen Caroline Road, tax map number one six four one four zero nine zero seven. And it's a request for recommendation to rezone the property from residential, single-family, large lot district RSF one to Office and Institutional District, OI. In this case, the staff recommendation is denial. And part of it is the the case history for the property. And also, while there is Office and Institutional nearby and and if we can see the next slide. Well, sorry, technicals. There we go. Right, so, you know, there's a fairly large tract of Office Institutional to the south. That is, you know, has been been developed. And and the portion that's appearing wooded in this is part of a larger development that is actually accessing it through Trinity Drive. When when there was an annexation rezoning for a portion of that property back then, the community that that was around Caroline Drive was had had concerns about extra commercial use on on Caroline Drive. And so we're looking at the zoning district itself, not necessarily individual use that's proposed. We we are recommending denial of the rezoning. And the applicant is here and I'm sure will address any questions you have.
Any commission members have any questions? First half? The applicant's here and might just.
How y'all doing? My name is Raheem Majid. And as he say, the nearest properties are already zoned for OIC, OI. And across the street, they're building apartments. And not too far from it, you have duplexes. You have another apartment right around the corner from Caroline. So it's not like I'm adding too much extra. And my neighbor, he said, he would have been here today if he had one that had nothing to do. He asked me if I could replan it. I said, I ain't got that type of power. But he's not opposing it as well.
Are you referring to the neighbor directly beside the space?
To the left? Yes, to the left. Because the one, the other house that's on the corner, that's already zoned, OI.
Yeah, the the neighbor to the left is already a business, correct? Or is that a residence?
No, no, that's residential, the one to my left. The one on the corner is, it was a business, but I don't know what they're planning on doing with it now. They just purchased it.
But if you're standing in Caroline Drive, this neighbor that's not opposing it.
No, sir.
Is to the left of you?
Yes, sir, Caroline Road. Like I said, they have an apartment, whole subdivision right across the street. And there's plenty of multifamilies throughout that area on that street, so.
What's your intended use?
Depends. Right now, he said, if it was to be rezoned, it could probably put ten units, but I think that's far too many. So either nice townhomes, it just depends on whatever mean the the designer, the whatever he come up with, whatever makes more sense. But I would say up to four or five units, something like that. See, the structure is definitely an old structure, definitely an old house. And it'd take so much just to update it. It's just, and it got a parcel or a structure in the back. It's it's just a whole, just sitting there for nothing.
I have a question for staff. With the future use classification, the urban edge residential, when that goes into effect in that, if that were to go into effect in that law, would they be able, would he be able to do multiple two-family, three-family townhomes? Or could he only build one three-family home?
Sure, and and I probably should have addressed the future land use a little bit more. So that that was part of our recommendation as well. So the future land use classification for that block is different than, and we're going to try to return the screen to that page. Okay, so so, you know, future land use classification is, it's a policy document of the city. And so it does provide us guidance in terms of what we expect to see there. And so that that future land use classification, it is a large lot residential classification, whereas across the street, across Caroline, that that is urban edge mixed residential, which is certainly asking for proposing a future where you see more intense development. And, you know, again, we understand that that part of that block is already see, you know, sorry, going to the old zoning districts, already Office and Institutional. But, you know, the again, that went into our our decision in terms of our staff recommendation on it. So in other words, that that future land use does not necessarily mean that that's what the development will be, but that's just a policy guidance for, yeah.
But if we were to, say, vote for it to be urban edge residential instead of Office Institutional, would a development of two-family townhomes be appropriate? Or would he only, would only like one singular or two-family home be appropriate?
Sure, well, so, right, within the within the land use classifications, they do talk about typical development types. And I'll, sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head. So my colleagues are better at knowing it off the top of my head. But so what they suggest for the primary development types within that land use classification would be single-family detached with with accessory dwelling units. And then it, you know, a lot of a lot of these classifications do talk about secondary types. This does not have secondary types, but it does have tertiary types. That would include a single-family attached, so that would include townhomes. Two-family, so duplexes, three-family, so, you know, triplex. And then small-scale civic or institutional or or business employment. And then, of course, cemetery is a mausoleum. So it 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 does allow for a mixture of zoning districts within it. So if if that land use classification was over a broad swath, then then you would expect to see multiple zoning districts.
Do you own the property towards Green Lawn?
Yes, sir. Green Lawn is the, bro, yes, Green Lawn, yes, sir. Green Lawn is basically the next street over that, yes, that connects Leesburg and Gunners Fair, which is, you know, on that side isn't more just single residential. But further going down Caroline, that's where you will see duplexes. You know, like I said, right around the corner, you have another apartment building. So it's it's a lot of multifamily going further down that way. But Green Lawn is mostly all single residential.
So so you own, just you own thirteen nineteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you did not own thirteen oh seven?
No, sir.
Or the one, okay.
We working on it, but no, that is, that of that of that.
Same entity, but if you don't own, you just own one of them?
Yes.
Got it.
But it's, I guess if I was hearing her correct, she was like recommending if if we were to rezone it, what would be like make more sense than, you know, trying to go overboard, I guess, with so many units? I mean, I'm open to that as well. It's just like anything better than just that one big structure, old structure right now. So I'm not opposed to, you know, certain many, three, four, like you were saying, two duplexes or something. I understand, I I'm not trying to go above and beyond in that small area. But just if I can just put anything more than that. Because like I said, that house right there, to make it even up to where it should be, it's, man, it'd just be too pricey.
I have a question for staff, thank you. One, you can, if you have some more questions, well.
All right.
The two parcels that are not highlighted further down Carolina, those in the county?
Right, that's an unincorporated donut hole.
And I forgive me for not knowing this, but do you know what the zoning is on those by chance offhand? I would assume it's somewhat conforming or what would be similar to the cities there?
I I have to admit, I do not know the zoning of those parcels.
R two, okay, that's what, yeah. Any commissioners have any other questions?
I have a question for staff. I think in your opening comments, she mentioned something about the history of the property. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so there there was an amendment, I believe, or a proposed amendment, and I believe twenty fifteen. And it was, of course, under our old zoning ordinance, and again, ten years ago. But the, yeah, it was a May fourth, twenty fifteen request to rezone from Urban Transitional District to, which was UTD, to Office Institutional, which which was C one, which is the equivalent of the OI District. And and so that was that was denied at that time.
I think the question I have just floated out there, I appreciate where the applicant is coming from and wanting to do, but is this, this would almost be an outlier in that group of parcels on that side of the street if we were to change the zoning there?
In in terms of the 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 parcels that
Okay, sorry.
are not corner lots, that that would that would be true. I I do believe that the the house next to them, that that is on Green Lawn, does face Caroline and is zoned Office Institutional.
Okay. This this is a, thank you for flipping back to this one.
Mr. Chairman, just as a as a follow-up question on that. The lots on the north, west and south, is that my correct? Yeah, northwest and south that are already zoned, OI. Is it that they were zoned that way before the, what do you call it? The future land use map?
So the the zoning goes back to when this area was annexed into the city back in the, I believe it was in the seventies. And so it was a very large tract of land that was all zoned Office in it, well, what was then C one.
Okay. So I guess, Mr. Chair, was that your question, the property on next to it, did it get rezoned?
Yes.
Okay.
Could we go to the net, the other slide, the zoning slide?
I'll try.
If you can. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's, this answers my question, too.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions of the applicant or staff? Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak regarding this application? All right. We can do it, take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the request to amend the zoning map for the property at thirteen nineteen Caroline Road to Office and Institutional District as it would allow a range of uses that are compatible with the uses allowed on other property in the immediate vicinity.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the, you know, we're now moving into some text amendments to the zoning ordinance or their Unified Development Ordinance. The first item, which is item twelve on your agenda, is TA dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 five. And it is a request for a recommendation to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, chapter seventeen, article four, use regulations, section seventeen dash four point two, which is, well, I guess I could read all that to you. But this is a, this is an amendment to to limit the number of permitted bedrooms in a dwelling or or living units located in private dormitories to four and to clarify related definitions. And so this is a city council-sponsored text amendment. And I will briefly cover the, you know, the details. And so, you know, basically, you know, the City of Columbia has has supported the, you know, the growth of of housing downtown, including student housing. Council has decided they want to encourage a a better mix of development downtown to include more multifamily, et cetera. And the, it wants to ensure that long-term residents downtown still have an attractive place to live, et cetera. And so limiting the number of bedrooms in in the private student dormitories to four would help ensure that the the housing type would be able to transition better to other types of housing should should there be a change in the demographics of our of our community. And let's say the student population, you know, maybe it continues to grow or or maybe it 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 does not. There is a demographic, I think cliff is the term I've heard when it comes to young folks. And so, you know, maybe the university continues to grow, maybe not. So this is an attempt to address that.
I think one question I had, so are private private student dormitories, is there, are they allowed in only like one or two zoning classes?
Sure, they they are allowed within three zoning districts.
Three, that's right.
But, you know, practically speaking, it's it's two. And and one is the mixed commercial district, which is primarily found throughout, you know, the Vista and the Vista areas. Another one is the DAC, the Downtown Activity Center.
And I think I think we saw this as an evolution, but just to clarify. So it's really just specific to private student dormitories in any allowable zoning class?
Right, so you you may be familiar that there was a resolution and and a moratorium. And that that draft at that time would have eliminated the private student student dormitories as a category from from the districts. This is a different tack on it. And it is to to say, look, you know, we are, we are allowing to exceed no more than three unrelated persons. So to have this 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 student housing development that exceeds our typical occupancy requirements, but but it would limit it to no more than four bedrooms. And certainly, you could build a four-bedroom apartment complex. But, you know, the 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 style of of building is different and and the lease type is different. And I will also mention that some of the modifications in here include the modifications of the definitions. And one of the things we did is we struck the requirement to have a individual bathroom for for each bedroom. Now, you still certainly could if you desire to, but that's no longer a requirement. And then, you know, we we just changed a little bit of language just to update it to to what at least is felt to be more appropriate.
So Andrew, the current ordinance allows how many bedrooms? Or is there a limitation? Six?
It it does not. It it says that no more than sixty percent can have more than three. So of of the units, so. units, so, and there have been some built with six bedrooms, yeah.
I very rarely see four-bedroom apartments on the market, so it's not a use that I think most developers care to spend money on, whether that's relevant or not.
And I think I need to correct myself. I said no more than 60% can have more than three, it's actually no more than, no more than 60% can be more, so in other words, you can build up to 60% four bedrooms, but you can't do more than 60%. So I got the, I got it a little bit backwards. So the requirement, and this is carried over, and so it was unchanged in here, but the requirement is, within the DAC or MCE, you shall not have more than 60% of the total number of dwelling units designed for occupancy by more than three unrelated adults. So you can have up to 60% that are four bedrooms, for example.
Any further questions for staff? Anybody in the public have any comments? All right. Carlos, you gonna keep the streak? Take a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that zoning text amendment TA 2025-0005 be approved.
You have a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the final item on the regular agenda is another text amendment, text amendment 2025-006, and this is a request for a recommendation to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to, and specifically to the RDMV zoning district, to amend setback requirements and also to permit two-family dwellings on lots of record meeting specified criteria. And again, this is, I am the applicant for this one as well. And a little bit of the backstory is, the RDMV district is the current ordinance's update to the old RD2 district, which was created in order to accommodate the use type found in Mill Villages where you had duplexes on small lots. And when the UDO was updated, it said, well, we're carrying forward the requirements within the district, and what happened was a footnote that was within a table, et cetera, sort of did not make the translation. So what the effect was, is that under our current UDO, as it's written, you need to have a lot of minimum size of 6,601 square feet, whereas in our old ordinance, it said if you have an existing historic lot, you can build a duplex on a lot that's as small as 3,300 square feet. And so it does specify that it is a lot that's found in the 1999 Richland County or Lexington County, if the case would be tax maps, so basically a historic lot. But if you have a lot and you subdivide it, let's say you have an acre and you subdivide it, you would have to meet density requirements in order to build duplexes, so those lots would have to be, for example, 6,600 square feet.
Mr. You would have to make what requirement?
Well, it's, it's actually, I think it's 13.2 units per acre, so that ends up being 6,601 square feet, yeah. And the second related thing that also appeared in the UDO when we adopted it was that the rear yard and side yard setbacks were transposed, and so as is written right now, our side yard setbacks in this district are 10 feet, and the rear yard is 5 feet, and that is both inconsistent with what was there in the past and also inconsistent with other districts, so we're just fixing that as well.
Any questions? I mean, y'all are the applicant and the public at this point. Take a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the zoning text amendment 2025-0006 to, as it meets the decision standards outlined in Section 17-2.5(c) in the Unified Development Ordinance.
Got a motion. Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And do we have any other business, or?
There's so much more to talk about.
Do you have any more applicants on your sleeve? All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I got to get out of here. Hey, this guy's scared. Hey, wait to step in there once.